Welcome everybody to the April twenty second meeting of the Planning Commission for Gulf Shores. I now call the meeting to order. Neil, can we get a roll call please? Here? Here? Here?
Jennifer Gatsby?
Here.
Alan Young?
Here.
Richard LeHorn?
Graham Brown.
Have a call, alright. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the March twenty five fifth meeting.
Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the minutes for the March meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Okay. We'll now move into the public hearing section and today we're going to do this a little different. I'm going to do the Gulf Shores Utilities Northside Water Tank first. And then we're going to go to June Bugs. Final minor subdivision and we'll wrap up with the Hebus Karaoke and Arcade Bar CUP. So, Andy, number one is yours.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. So before we get into the first public hearing, I'll just quickly go over the public hearing guidelines for those members of the public who are present. City staff will present the application. Then the Planning Commission Chairman will entertain any questions from the commissioners. The Chairman will then open the public hearing. You will invite anyone who would like to speak to the microphone. Please state your name, physical address. Ask questions directly to the commissioners, not to the audience. And then try to refrain from repeating any similar comments that were previously stated. At that point, the Chairman will close the public hearing. And then the Planning Commissioners will have any further discussion and vote on each application. So with that, the first item on the agenda is ZA twenty five zero seven. It is the Gulf Shores Utilities Water Tank North Conditional Use Permit Site Plan. The applicant seeks a CUP site plan approval to construct a new two million, two million gallon, hundred and forty foot tall water tank. The proposed water tank is located on a forty-five acre property that's south of the new Gulf Shores High School that's currently under construction. The property is zoned educational district and it's currently vacant wooded. There are three location maps on the screen that show the specific location of the property. The map on the left shows the, see the parcel outline there. It's directly south of the high school that's under construction. The middle diagram shows a zoomed out version of the same kind of area surrounding the property to the north. Obviously, it's a new high school, south, the property is a vacant wooded property owned by the city. East of the property is the Foley Beach Express and then west of the property is single family houses within the Craft Farms North subdivision. And then the map on the right-hand side shows the zoning of the property, educational zoning district, as well as the surrounding zoning around the property. We did advertise this application in the course with Article three dash seven of the zoning ordinance. We have not received any correspondence from the public notice. Existing conditions, again, the property is zoned educational zoning district. A water tank is classified as an essential service facility. And essential service facilities are only allowed by conditional use permit in the educational zoning district. As the Planning Commission is aware, a conditional use permit requires, well, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation on this application. And the City Council will have final, take final action in the future on the conditional use permit application. I think I've covered the surrounding land uses and zoning. We'll skip that, skip over that part. Here, this diagram shows the proposed water tank in locations to some of the existing uses. It's taken, I guess, looking towards the, let me see, northeast. So you see the proposed water tank in the middle of the screen. Auburn Veterinary Specialists up to the top left. Future Gulf Shores High School site. And then the Foley Beach Express kind of in the distance. Then the houses within Craft Farms North are in the forefront of the picture. Again, Gulf Shores Utilities intends to construct a two million, two million gallon elevated water storage tank. The tank will provide additional water storage, improve the reliability of water service in this area of the city. And then support future residential and commercial growth in the northern area of the city of Gulf Shores. So since the Planning Commission packet went out to you guys on Friday. We've received a revised site plan that addressed some of staff's comments. So the diagram on the left is the original site plan that was provided to you guys in your packet. The diagram on the right is a revised site plan that was received since the Planning Commission packet went out to you guys on Friday. Couple changes were made. The, they relocated the temporary gravel access road. It kind of winds or is located a lot closer to the wetlands. It's still out of the wetland buffer. The previous location of the gravel drive went through what will potentially be future athletic fields for the Gulf Shores High School. So we asked them to relocate that. And then the disturb, the size of the disturb site has been reduced. We ask Gulf Shores Utilities to reduce the size of the, or the amount of disturbance as much as possible. And they, they did reduce the size of the disturbed site substantially. So that's what the diagram on the right-hand side shows. So with that, the site plan, the lot size is forty-five acres. Building height is a hundred and forty feet. Building coverage, educational zoning district allows sixty-five percent of the building coverage. This is less, should be less than one percent of the site will be covered because it's a forty-five acre site. The disturbed area is only thirteen percent of the site, five point seven seven acres. The water tank greatly exceeds the minimum setbacks from the property lines because it's located in the, basically in the middle of a forty-five acre property. And then it greatly exceeds the minimum landscape requirement of twenty percent. Because the site will remain pretty much vacant wooded at this point in time. And it'll be eighty-seven percent landscaped. So the site will be accessed by a twelve-foot temporary gravel access drive. That will run south from an existing roadway that's provided at the Gulf Shores High School site. The City Council granted a right-of-entry form back in February of twenty twenty-four to Gulf Shores Utilities. That right-of-entry allows Gulf Shores Utilities to perform all work necessary to construct the water tank. Clearing, grubbing, surveying, and construction of the tank is covered under that right-of-entry form. And then once the tank is completed, Gulf Shores Utilities shall supply the city with a final survey. With a description and a permanent easement will be granted to this, from the city to Gulf Shores Utilities for access to the water tank. So you can see on the proposed site plan. There is a small area of wetlands that will be crossed. They have received their Corps of Engineers permit to fill that small area of wetlands. Otherwise, they are maintaining a thirty-foot wetland buffer from the wetlands as required by the city's wetland protection regulations. Here's a diagram of the proposed water tank. It'll be eighty-seven feet in diameter and a hundred and forty feet tall. Landscaping plan was submitted by the applicant. So a six-foot wide privacy fence with masonry columns every fifty feet is proposed around the water tank. Landscape buffering composed of trees and shrubs is provided along the exterior of the fence. I believe that's a Class B buffer. So that complies with our, the minimum landscape requirements and buffering requirements of the zoning ordinance. Tree protection, they did submit a tree protection plan with their site plan and CUP application. Numerous twelve to nineteen inch pine trees will be removed. With the relocating of the driveway or the access road and shrinking of the size. Less pine trees will be removed than what originally was anticipated before we got the revised site plan. So they are making efforts to preserve as many trees as possible. And the tree protection regulations do allow the removal of protected trees without remediation if they are within the footprint of an area proposed for improvements. So there is no required tree remediation in this instance. Here's a diagram showing the proposed screen fence. It will be a solid board-on-board fence with columns, brick, masonry columns every fifty feet. And the height of the fence is six feet. The landscaping will be placed on the exterior side of the fence. We felt it was necessary to include the brick columns because eventually there will be sports facilities around this water tank. So we want to make it look as nice as possible in addition to the required screening. So CUP analysis, as you guys all know. Article three dash four of the zoning ordinance provides fourteen factors for which CUPs are reviewed by. City staff has provided a synopsis of that review on the right-hand side of the screen. All, the applicant is in the process of receiving all state and federal permits. They have received a permit from the Federal Aviation Administration approving the height of the proposed water tank. It is not a hazard to air navigation at the Gulf Shores International Airport. They've also received a permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers to fill a small portion of wetlands to cross those wetlands and gain access to this portion of the site. And then they are still awaiting a permit from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management that is related to actual approval of the water tank. The new tank is compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city because it enhances economic vitality of the surrounding area. And will improve the water quality in this portion of the city of Gulf Shores. There are no anticipated diminishing of the environment or, or quality of natural resources. Again, the wetlands are being preserved and buffered in accordance with the wetland protection regulations. And then the actual water tank itself has been sited in a way to avoid the future athletic facilities that are shown on the Gulf Shores High School master plan. And then finally, the water tank is also designed to limit any negative impacts of the surrounding land uses and buildings. It's located over a thousand feet from the existing houses within Craft Farms North, single-family neighborhood, six hundred feet from the Foley Beach Express. It's bounded to the north by the future Gulf Shores High School and bounded to the south by a hundred and fifteen acres of wooded land that's owned by the city of Gulf Shores. There's also another section in the zoning ordinance that has specific regulations relating to essential service facilities. That is section eleven dash nineteen of the zoning ordinance. Primarily, primarily has regulations regarding the location and landscaping and buffering for essential service facilities. So again, the water tank is located to maximize any, or maximum distance away from any existing uses. So as to minimize the visibility and impacts from adjacent businesses and dwellings. Then again, the landscape plan has been provided. Solid wood fences provided around the water tank with masonry columns every fifty feet. The water tank is also buffered and screened in accordance with the zoning ordinance. And the water tank is located on a forty-five acre wooded property. Only thirteen percent of the site will be disturbed and eighty-seven percent of the site will remain at this point with mature tree growth. Until the city or the high school in the future develops athletic facilities around the water tank. The grading and drainage plan has been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. A lighting plan was provided by the applicant. The base of the structure will have four wall pack light fixtures. Those lighting plan is, has been reviewed and approved in accordance with the zoning ordinance regulations. And then the FAA in their letter approving the height of the structure indicated that there is no required FAA lighting. But if they do light the facility, it must be lighted in accordance with the FAA regulations. Department and agency reviews, the Fire Marshal and Engineering Department have reviewed and approved the site plan. So with that, staff recommends approval of the application with the following conditions. Condition number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the following comments shall be addressed. The city of Gulf Shores Schools branding shall be incorporated on the tower. Details of the artwork to be placed on the tower shall be submitted for review and approval by the city and Gulf Shore City School System. The Gulf Shores Utilities has agreed to that comment. And they basically said whatever the city and the school system want on the water tank, whatever type of logo or branding, they will place it on the water tank. It's just, it's up to the city and school system to tell them exactly what we want on the water tank at this point. And then we have a comment related to, they still need to get the water supply permit approved by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Then condition number two, prior to this item being scheduled for the City Council, the following comments shall be addressed. We removed item A because they did submit the landscaping screening plan. So item B is the size of the cleared area shall be reduced to minimize the effects of the existing vegetation. They did reduce the size of the area around the water tank, but we would like to talk to them and make sure that's the minimum size they need. So we're going to keep that comment in there. And then item, condition two C, temporary twelve-foot gravel access drive shall be redesigned to minimize the effects on the existing vegetation and limit the disturbance of future high school recreation areas. They did redesign that. We want to run it by the school system to make sure that's not going to affect any future uses. We don't believe it will, but I haven't had time to run it by all of the affected parties. So we'd like to keep that in there for now. And then condition two D, the temporary gravel drive shall be paved from its intersection, from the intersection to the south side of the wetlands. And the applicant's aware of that and have agreed to it. They just hadn't reflected it on their plans yet. And then condition two E, they did submit a completed application which had been, has been signed by the city of Gulf Shores. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, Andy, who's maintaining the roadway that goes from the top to there? Who's going to be maintaining that roadway, the city or the?
Temporary gravel access drive. My understanding, it would be maintained by Gulf Shores Utilities at this point because it's, at least for the, for the near future, it'll only be going to the water tank. And the, you know, further along in the future, I don't know exactly when the city will, I mean, the Gulf Shores High School will build their athletic facilities. But once those athletic facilities are built, you know, I would assume probably the high school and them will maintain it. But it could become a completely paved drive at that point. I don't, I don't know for sure.
So the forty acres that are, that are left undeveloped is for the expansion of the high school's athletic facilities?
Yes, sir, it could be. There are a lot of wetlands on this property also, especially going towards the south. So obviously, a lot of the wetlands will remain in their natural state.
And this tank will, will supply most of the, most of the area out there on County Road Eight? Is it mostly for that area or is it?
It's my assumption Gulf Shores representatives from Gulf Shores Utilities are here. They can answer those questions probably in a lot better detail than I can.
Andy, did you say the temporary gravel drive is, is going to be paved when this is?
A portion of it will be paved. So we wanted to get them to pave from the intersection where it intersects with the existing paved road that goes around the high school across the wetlands. And then it can become gravel because that, that portion of the gravel drive could change a little bit. But we want to make sure where it intersects with the existing paved road is paved across the wetlands.
Okay.
That's, that portion will not change.
Give us a little summary of what y'all?
Yeah, I'm, excuse me, my name is Robbie Strom with GMC representing Gulf Shores Utilities.
Yes.
Yeah, basically to answer your question, it will, it'll benefit the whole north side of the system, which is a lot of where we anticipate a lot of growth to be coming. It'll help with flow and pressure throughout that area.
How's our situation now with the city? Do we have enough water for continuing growth or you got to put in more of these tanks or?
Uh, we, we do have enough now, but this will certainly help as we go through the future.
Alright, so when do you plan on starting construction?
Just as soon as we can get all the permits in hand.
Cause we're going A D M, right? Andy, waiting on A D M?
That's right. That, that permit was actually submitted back in December. I think they're, they're lagging a little slow right now. But I guess to answer your question, we could go to bid as soon as this fall.
I got any questions up here? Well, of the care. Just go ahead.
Is there any security systems around, on this?
No, not other than the lighting that we have and of course the, the fence.
Will it be locked? Will it be locked?
Yes.
Just a comment, I serve on the utility board. And so this, been looking for quite some time, a place to put this water tower. Being on the north end of the city, that's a very strategic location with our system and volume and pressure and stuff. Where our water capacity drops during peaks of the season. This will really help in a lot of ways. And for over a year, we've been looking for, maybe over two years, we've been really looking for locations. And have ruled out several because of impacts to neighboring communities or for one reason or another. And so this was a site that was put on the table by the city and the school board when the master plan for the high school got completed and they knew where everything was going. So a lot of time's been spent getting to this strategic location.
Do you, do you have an idea of how many houses you can actually supply with, with this tank? Any idea just roughly?
No, not, not necessarily. It's, it's more of a system-wide benefit than just.
Or just ties into your whole system?
That's right.
Guys, got any questions? Okay, I'll now open up the, thank you, sir. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anyone who would like to address this body regarding this water tank, please step forward. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're grateful Gulf Shore City Schools to be involved in the planning and coordination. We do have phase one underway, as you well know, for the high school, but there's lots more to come. Our goal eventually is to have as many sports compete on campus, which includes football, baseball, softball, tennis, et cetera. So we're looking to use all that additional acreage. But to have this coordination to recognize that it's going to go along with, with Gulf Shore City Schools is very important to us. And we're grateful for that opportunity. And since it's a water tower, maybe make waves might be appropriate on the side of it.
I was going to say, I, I hope you come up with something really good. I was going to say, I hope you come up with something really good with the tanks.
I'll leave that to the higher ups. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else like to make a comment regarding this thing? Okay, anybody up here? I'll close the public hearing and the chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve recommend approval of Z A 25000007 Gulf Shores Utilities North Side Water Tank with Conditions.
Second. You got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All disapproved? Okay, motion carried. Thanks, guys. Good luck. Next, we're going to jump ahead here to the Junebug Oaks Final Subdivision. And that's Scott. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be presenting Agenda Item 4C, the Junebug Oaks Final Plat. And this will be my first presentation for the Planning Commission, so I do appreciate you allowing me to have a pretty straightforward subdivision plat as my first one. Any moment to?
Find it.
To find it? Well, I'm going backwards. Good. I'll teach him how to use. All right, there we go. So the Junebug Oaks Final Plat, the request is the current subject property is 42,238 square feet, which is just shy of one acre. They're requesting to subdivide existing two lots into a three-lot subdivision. We did send out public notice in accordance with our local regulations and state code. I will point out that we did receive an email and a phone call from an adjacent resident today. The email's been provided to you. Her concern was the relatively short notice that she received prior to the meeting. Totally understandable. We've actually already begun discussions internally to exceed the minimum requirements, put the letters in the mail sooner and maybe explore other means of public notice because it is important for everyone to find out about it and have adequate time to attend or to learn more. So the map on your left kind of shows a larger view of the area. This is off of Callaway Road, which runs north off of 180. The subject property is about 1,700, 1,800 feet north of 180, about a third of a mile. The map on the right shows a closer shot. You'll see the southern portion of the subject property has an existing single-family home on it and the northern portion is currently undeveloped. This is the zoning map of the area. Subject property is zone R14, single-family residential, as is everything surrounding These are some pictures of what you'd see today. The picture on the upper left, if you're standing right about the south boundary of the subject property, kind of looking to the northeast, you'll see the existing house. And the picture on the right is from the northern boundary of the subject property looking, I guess, southeast. You can see it's again, it's undeveloped today. Just for some background information, this is an aer photograph from 2022. There at the kind of the northern portion of the subject property on the address 2560 Callaway Road, there was what appears to be a manufactured home. The city issued a demolition permit for that structure in 2022 and it's now gone. It's now vacant property. The request is again, it's existing two lots to subdivide into three lots. Proposed lots one and two, I'm sorry, proposed lots two and three are 13,239. Those are the two smaller of the three lots. They exceed the minimum requirement of 11,000 in this zoning and the narrowest lot is 94 feet wide, which the minimum is 75. So they all exceed the minimums. Just on the graphic, so on the right is the proposed plat, the blue outline there is what is there today, the two lots, and the red outline is what's proposed, three lots. Again, proposed lot three has the or proposed lot one rather has the, I've labeled them wrong. So the southern lot, what's on the on three on the plat is has the existing house. Proposed lots one and two are vacant. I think I covered all these, but again, the proposed plat exceeds all the minimum standards for the underlying underlying R14 zoning. All three proposed lots have frontage all along Callaway Road. The Fire Marshal's office and the Engineering Department have reviewed this and expressed no objections. We've also received letters of availability from Baldwin EMC, Gulf Shores Utilities, and Riviera Utilities, which is natural gas. Staff recommends approval with the condition of submitting the fee in lieu of the sidewalk construction to be paid prior to the plat being recorded. That's the end of my report.
Can we check the drainage? The drainage, air is okay out there? Okay. If you have any questions? Pretty straightforward.
Did you hear back from the person that emailed or called?
Yes, ma'am. We spoke on the phone, we traded some emails. Again, she her primary complaint was the just the short notice. Again, understandable and we're going to try to improve that going forward. I will point out, so the proposed, well, the existing, so on the screen, those two blue lots, a single-family home could be constructed. The setback nearest to her on the side would be 10 feet. With the proposed plat with the three lots, the same thing could happen. A single-family home with a side setback of 10 feet. Again, these lots are much larger than the minimum, so typically people build toward the center of the lot depending on topography, so.
And where is her home?
She's immediately to the to the north of the subject property.
That's lot one. Here. Okay.
Yeah, there you go. She the person emailed is at 25.
2570.
Yes.
Well, that's an old picture. This is single-family residential, correct?
Yes, sir. And there's the zoning map. Everything surrounding is single-family residential.
And we're going to open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to come and ask any questions about the Junebug Oaks Final Plat? Okay, do everybody come up at once? Okay. All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Junebug Oaks Final Plat, Application Z A 25, number 12, with staff recommendation.
Second. A motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Is the person here today that represents the, are they here today? Anybody with us?
We again.
Got any any questions for Trent? Okay, thanks. Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, now comes our interesting. The Hebas Karaoke and Arcade Bar CUP. Andy, please explain in detail this one, please.
Yes, sir. This is Z A 2509. It's a conditional use permit submitted from Hebas. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit approval for lounge bar use at Suite 210 of Pelican Place Shopping Center. Pelican Place is located at 3800 Gulf Shores Parkway. I think you all know where Pelican Place Shopping Center is. A lounge bar use is only allowed by a conditional use permit at that location. Here are the location maps on your screen. The all three maps show the location of Pelican Place. The small dot shows a specific location of Hebas within Pelican Place. The zoning out there currently is planned unit development overlay and it used to be part or was part of the original Craft Farms Residential Plan Community. Here are a few site photos. Again, Hebas is located next door to Makado Japanese Restaurant and in the interior courtyard of of the shopping center. You got four photos of kind of the front area of Hebas and then the bottom right-hand side shows the rear photograph of Hebas location. So zoning, the map is the original Craft Farms Residential Plan Community Approved Master Plan. You see the area in the highlighted in red, it's commercial, 76 acres. That's primarily the area along State Highway 59 that is now developed into commercial development. So only master plan, the commercial areas, it designates those as for general business uses. And in the general business zoning district, a bar or lounge bar use is only allowed by a conditional use permit. So that's why the application is before you today or one of the reasons the application's before you today. So Pelican Place was developed in 2006 at that point in time and is called a Colonial Lifestyle Center. It was developed as a 160,000-square-foot retail and restaurant development. And you see kind of the existing layout that is out there today. Background on this application, Cohiba Dunes Cigar Bar operated from 2009 to 2022. The business license indicated this, the principal use of Cohiba Dunes Cigar Bar was tobacco sales. In 2023 and 2024, the Cohiba Dunes Business License renewal was referred to the city council for review by the Revenue Department. The reason for the review was at the request of the Police Department for criminal and safety issues which were occurring at Cohiba Dunes. In both instances, the city council renewed those business licenses, subject to a written agreement by the licensee to strict compliance with the express conditions stated in Resolution 668923 and 679024. And then in July 19th of 2024, Hebas or Cohiba Dunes was purchased by new owners. The business was changed name and came up with a new business plan. It's called Hebas Karaoke and Arcade Bar and they submitted a new business license. Upon submission of that new business license, it triggered Planning Department as well as other departments review of any new business license. And we reviewed the, when we reviewed the business license, we noted that it was a change of use from a cigar bar to a lounge bar use. Again, a lounge bar use at this location requires approval of a conditional use permit because of the underlying general business zoning district. We did notice this application in accordance with Article 3-7 of the zoning ordinance. We have not received any correspondence from that public notice. So part of a conditional use permit application is for the applicant to submit a narrative supporting their conditional use permit request. Hebas has done so. This is kind of a summarized version of what you guys have in your packet that was sent out last Friday. So Hebas seeks to create an entertainment venue that provides a safe, fun, well-managed spot that brings something fresh to the Gulf Shores entertainment scene. They would like to transition away from the previous tobacco bar model and focus more on creating a space that caters to families in the early evening hours before shifting into a traditional late-night bar setting. From 4:00 p.m. to midnight, Hebas will offer safe, enjoyable space for families and responsible patrons. Karaoke arcade games and entertainment will ensure a welcoming experience for locals and visitors. And then their narrative states that the front section of the venue will operate as a boutique wine bar, offering wine, security boards, and cold-cut sandwiches. Their narrative also states or has a section about past safety concerns. They indicate they are addressing those issues by with identification checks that are enforced at all times to prevent underage access to alcohol. The last call for drinks is set at 2:30 to ensure that the bar is closed every night at 3:00 a.m. And then Hebas will also maintain a security presence to prevent disturbances and promote safe experience for guests and the surrounding area. So again, the reason this application is before the Planning Commission is because a new business license application was received. Upon review of that business license, it was noted that there was a change in use from a cigar bar to a lounge bar use. And a lounge bar use at this location requires conditional use permit approval. Just like the previous conditional use permit application, Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will take final action on this CUP application. Again, Article 3-4 of the zoning ordinance has 14 factors for which a conditional use permit application is to be reviewed. We have analyzed those 14 factors. A lot of them are not applicable in this instance, but a synopsis of our analysis will be provided here in the next couple of slides. So one of the requirements is a is a site development plan in accordance with all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance, including that the proposed use is designated as a conditional use per conditional use within the applicable district. Again, a lounge bar use is only allowed by CUP in the general business zoning district. It is worth noting that Pelican Place was originally approved as a lifestyle center for retail and restaurant uses. The CUP next criteria is the proposed site plan compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city and other governmental agencies for this area. We review the Vision 2025 Plan for Sustainability as well as a future land use plan. And the kind of the primary purpose and mission statement and core value of the Vision 2025 Plan is for Gulf Shores to honor a family-centric, safety-oriented tradition and is committed to preserving our family-friendly, small-town, safe atmosphere. That's kind of an overriding goal and, you know, goal of the 2025 Vision Plan. And then the future land use plan, Pelican Place is designated as an activity center. Activity centers are areas where there's shopping and a lot of restaurant, retail uses and activities for our citizens. Activity centers are intended to positively relate and support adjacent residential neighborhoods. And then the the future land use plan also indicates that Gulf Shores intends to become a special, authentic place by placing an emphasis on community character, livability, and provide a better well-being and quality of life for its citizens. City staff believes that this proposal will not honor and preserve the city's family-friendly, small-town atmosphere, and safety-oriented tradition. The lounge bar use that remains open until 3:00 a.m. does not state the goals of the Vision 2025 Plan nor the land use plan. The last criteria kind of combines several of the 14 factors in this one. Does a proposed use provide economic benefits, enhance the economic vitality of the surrounding area, burden city infrastructure, cause injury to the value of surrounding property, and operate that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protective from impacts that may be caused by the use? Lounge bar uses can negatively impact communities through increased criminal activity as well as create safety concerns for patrons and neighboring residents. Extended bar hours contribute to noise pollution, additional police services, and reduce quality of life for those living near bars. So with that, the primary factors in review of a CUP application according to the zoning ordinance is the need for the proposed use and how the use represents a positive impact on Gulf Shores and its residents. So our kind of our review in summary, again, in both 2023 and 2024, the business license was referred to the city council for review due to issues stemming from safety issues from the late-night bar activities. Number two, Hebas late-night lounge bar business is not compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city for this for the city of being a family-friendly community. And then three, late-night lounge bar uses negatively impact communities in a variety of ways as indicated in our report. So for those stated reasons, city staff recommends denial of the CUP application to allow a lounge bar use at Suite 10 to 10 of Pelican Place. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, I need to ask, what type of a liquor license does this establishment have? Because a lounge liquor license does not allow for children to come in if it's a restaurant liquor license. Need to know that. That's kind of an important thing. If it's a restaurant's liquor license, children are permitted. Is that not correct?
I would have to research the answer to that question. I don't I don't know for a fact on in terms of liquor license.
Yeah, that's how it used to be. Okay. And the business is currently operating now, and has there been a lot of complaints recently?
So the business is currently operating. Their business license application is being held pending review and action by the planning commission and city council on the C U P. request.
I'd like to ask the, you know, when we get to that point, what type of food is being served here? Is this a lounge liquor license? Exactly what is that? When you say lounge liquor license, what does that mean? I know it's got to comply with the C U P., but I mean, is it is it predominantly selling more beer and liquor opposed to food, or is food a percentage of the sales?
I don't I'll have to give the answer to that question. I don't know the liquor license types and the different amounts of food versus versus how much liquor alcohol is served.
That could be a that could be a big difference.
Yes, sir.
That's my only question.
Andy, did Cohiba Dunes, the previous operation, did they ever have to go through a C U P. process?
They did not. They were permitted as a cigar bar when they originally opened.
So the C U P. is for what you have in here lounge slash bar use?
Yes, sir.
It said on the letter from Hiba's, it says a family-friendly experience until midnight. But in the presentation, it says until three P M. or three A M.
So in their application, I believe it says a family-friendly experience till midnight, but they're still going to keep their late-night hours and close at three A M.
They're going to be in the back of the place or the front of the place, and they have the food, and the family's eating up front, and then late-night in the back?
It's not a very large place. I think it'll be, well, I'll let them answer that question. I don't know.
Questions, Val? You got any questions?
No, I don't think I do from staff. I mean, other than do we, the main question I have, do we know the outcome from our police department after they changed and put in place all these things during the last C U P. process when they came in, I think, what, twenty-four, twenty-three? Yeah. Think there was.
I don't know. I don't know the specific outcomes. I've I've mentioned this application to the police department and told them it would be on the agenda tonight, and I've tried to call the police chief. I think he may be out of town. I haven't been able to get in touch with him over the last couple of days. I don't know the specific outcome of the conditions of the place on this application of the business license, business license renewal.
Okay, so just a question, back in February of twenty-four, when the business license was renewed with conditions, there was a business plan submitted by the operator in order to get that renewal, which included a kitchen, a full kind of a full menu expansion, a shift toward a restaurant with a bar rather than a late-night bar, along with some of their security items and those kind of issues. And then so I understand the the business was sold. But so that that approval with that model business plan just kind of went away when it was sold and transferred. And I'm assuming according to this timeline, that was sold in July of twenty-four.
That's my understanding, and it's also my understanding that because, you know, Cohiba Dunes is operating off the conditional conditional business license, which was approved by the city council with, you know, fifteen conditions. My understanding is that went away when this new business license was applied for, and that's a reason for the C U P. Application and review that's before you today.
So from July till now, have we just been working with the applicant on? I'm just saying, from July to April, we've been working with the applicant on trying to get a business plan and a C U. plan together to submit?
Yes, sir.
And this model that's represented here with the family-friendly atmosphere and the food, and then the conversion of the space after midnight, is that the way it's operating? Has been operating, or is this a future plan for operation? I'd like to hear, maybe that's something we can hear there too. We'd like to understand what's the model that we're we've been operating under, and is this a new plan? And kind of what's been going on up there since they bought the place in July?
Okay, I would like to, if y'all have things to kind of open up the, open up the room for a public hearing. So anybody would like to come and address this? Are you Mr. Tadlock?
No.
Okay.
That's Bailey.
I'm Kevin.
Okay. Thanks for coming today.
Yeah, of course. I appreciate you guys for having me. So just to clear up a few things that have been said, the business was not purchased in two thousand and twenty-four. I took over, or I was asked by Dakota Hollis and Turner Adcock to come in as an operations manager to turn things around, and that was in April of two thousand and twenty-four. So that's when I took over, and there were a lot of, there are a lot of issues, police issues, drugs, safety. And so what we did was we just kind of hit the ground running. We took a look at all the things that were in Resolution six-six-eight-nine dash twenty-three and Resolution six-seven-nine-zero dash twenty-four, and we knocked all of those things out. We updated all the security cameras. We installed the state-of-the-art I D. verification system. We got rid of all the old staff. We brought in Bailey, who is the bar manager, serve safe certified, TAM certified. All of our bartenders are TAM certified. And we made our alcohol policies a lot more stricter. We have a strict cutoff, or basically last call at two-thirty. We and we basically have everyone off the property by about three. We have an in-house security team. That was not something that existed before. We have a head of security that kind of basically runs all those operations as well. So in terms of how we've been operating, we've been operating way better than what Cohiba Dunes was operating as. And we've been operating it underneath those conditions that were given to us or that was given to Cohiba when I took over to basically run everything. It was not until January of this year that myself, Bailey, and another individual, we started Sing Play Dance LLC, and we decided to actually take over the business entirely. At that point, that's when we reached out to the city, and we decided to go ahead and do everything in the right way, follow the right process in terms of the C U P. and submitting and everything like that.
What type of A B C. license do you have?
We have a Class Two liquor lounge license, which means that we can serve food with a limited menu.
Sir, can you have children in there where liquor is being?
From my understanding, we can. It was underneath the tobacco license, a tobacco bar license. We were not allowed to have kids in the facility.
You can't have children, yeah.
Correct, correct.
You're operating under a tobacco license for children to come in and eat.
That's basically, so that's why we're applying for the C U P. is we don't want to, I mean, we haven't, they haven't served tobacco there in I don't know how long. But when we, when I took over operations back in April twenty twenty-four, I actually removed the humidor room. We spent about seventy thousand dollars in renovations on the whole entire inside. So it looks completely different. There's, it doesn't smell like smoke. I mean, it's it's very nice now.
Who owns the property? Who owns the business now?
Myself, Bailey, and Justin Kahano. We are all.
Bailey's right there.
She's the managing member as well as the bar manager at the bar.
Can you, all right, can you read through all of the explanation? But can you describe a little bit, so you've got this wine bar, you've got the karaoke, you've got the arcade? Can you just describe the overall?
Sure. So at the end of the day, what we wanted to create was we wanted to create an entertainment venue. I know that it's talked about a lot that we are a late-night bar, but when I came up with the concept of Hiba's, it was not to be a late-night bar. It was to become an experience-based business where you can come in and you can have some sort of experience and enjoy that with your family, with your friends. And so if you take a look at the floor plan, I think the floor plan will kind of help you get a better sense of how we have everything structured. But if you take a look at that floor plan, you're going to see a bar that's kind of off to your left when you first walk in through those doors. That is the bar that we are turning into the wine bar, and that is where we are going to serve a very curated list of wines from. That's also where we're going to do our charcuterie boards and cold-cut sandwiches and flatbreads. That's what we like to do over there on that side. If you look directly across, you'll see another bar when you first walk in through those doors. That is our back bar. That bar has always been there, but we renovated it when I took over operations in April of two thousand and twenty-four. We made it a little bit bigger. We added some more seating. And that bar is basically what houses the karaoke stuff. So if you take a look at our business plan, you'll kind of see that we have the timing of the business structured in a way to where it can be family-friendly, but then it can also appease those people that are looking for something to do after, let's say, midnight or something like that. So from four P M. to eight P M. or four P M. to ten P M., what we like to do is we like to run our wine bar idea, and that's going to be called sipping. And the concept of that is just sip in something else. Very commonly, we've seen sip and paint. Everybody's familiar with that, but we'd like to do more than just that. So sip in scrapbooks, sip in sing, sip in something, right? That's going to cover from that four P M. to eight P M. period, four P M. to ten P M. period. We're still trying to figure that out. Once that ends, then we would have the other side open, which is going to be when karaoke starts. So the idea is to, if you have all these people in here at one time, what can we now transition them to do besides drinking wine and painting or whatever it is that they're doing? Okay, now we're going to introduce karaoke. So it's all kind of staggered throughout the night so that you get different experiences throughout the, throughout the day, basically. So you have the wine bar experience, then you have the karaoke experience, and then on Fridays and Saturdays, we have a D J. from midnight to three A M., so then you have the D J. experience as well.
Where's the arcade?
The arcades are pretty much all around the, all around the outside perimeter of the, of the of the inside of the building. So most of it's on that wine bar side, but we're trying to figure out different ways of looking into some wall-mounted options as well. Just because arcades tend to be a lot bigger, we're dealing with not the biggest space in the world. So we're looking at different options to kind of size down those arcades, but they're they're pretty much all around.
You have a full, full-sized kitchen where you prepare food?
So we do not have, we do not have a full-sized kitchen. It, again, when I took over operations in April twenty twenty-four, I did kind of look at everything that they had presented to you guys in terms of adding on a kitchen, and I don't know why they said that. It just wasn't feasible. It doesn't make any sense. That is a very, very small space to even put a hood in. So I think the only way that we could do it is we could either do it at a commercial air fryer, which there are certain commercial air fryers where you don't need a hood for, and then also pizza ovens as well. And so that's why we're doing the whole flatbread idea and things of that sort. Obviously, with the charcuterie boards, that's all cold-cut, so you don't need anything for that.
So none of the food operations have been in place yet?
We have not started any of those yet.
The wine?
No, the wine bar is in the process of getting made, but we have been waiting to see how this was going to turn out before we continued with just about everything.
Can you kind of give us an overview, snapshot of what your operation has been since you took over to now? I mean, what do you do on a daily basis in there?
Absolutely, absolutely. So right now, we open at eight P M., and we are open from eight P M. to three A M. Sunday through Thursday, we do karaoke that whole entire time. The only time that that stops is Fridays and Saturdays where karaoke stops at midnight, and then we have a D J. from midnight until two-thirty, two-forty-five, basically last call. And that's basically how we've operated. What we did was we look at, we looked at the opera, how it was currently being operated, and we just tightened all of those things up. And then this year, we're trying to introduce these new ideas. That's why we're applying for the C U P.
You might be able, you know, to see, you've got enough licenses there to serve children, to maybe have children in there too.
Yes.
Say you didn't renew the cigar license.
We did not renew the cigar, the tobacco part of the license. We do not have.
So you have a lounge liquor license?
Yes, I believe it's Class Two, which just means a limited menu.
Do you have some menu now?
No, we have not. We have not started on the food. We've created an idea of what we want that menu to, for what it, what we want it to look like. But with a Class Two, we actually have to get that approved.
So was the original requirement in twenty-four when you took over, what was the requirement regarding food in the restaurant?
So there was no mention in terms of a requirement of that we had to introduce food. I could be wrong on that, but in the six-six-eight-nine and the six-nine, the six-seven-nine-zero resolutions, I did not see anything about there was a requirement to have food. So we just focused on what the actual requirements were. I think food, it takes a lot of work, and we have already had a lot of work ahead of us with everything else that needed to be fixed and that needed to be changed. I mean, we had to rewrite the whole entire book. So we had to start from the foundation, completely, you know, get rid of everything that people thought of this place and every bad thing that was going on there, and we had to create a whole new foundation. So we focused on that, and it took us about a year to do that.
How is your situation now? How's your security, and are you having fights in there and drug dealing? Have all that, all that hopefully done away with?
Well, actually, Police Chief Nedermeier actually can be quoted this morning on Orange Beach News saying that there have been a lot less issues. He has actually been very impressed with our security protocol. Again, that's on Orange Beach News. He says it. So there are not issues. Obviously, when there was no management there, there was no oversight, there was no accountability, of course, there's going to be issues. When I stepped in, we changed all that.
Andy, help me on the zoning classification allowance bar use is only allowed by C U P. Is that in that zoning district, or was that part of the P U. D.? And the second half of my question is, what type of drinking establishment would be allowed by right that wouldn't require a C U P. in that location?
Okay, so the first question is, the answer to that is the original master plan for Craft Farms designates that whole shopping center as a commercial use. Commercial, and it states commercial uses as allowed by the general business zoning district. In the general business zoning district, lounge bar uses are only allowed by conditional use permit. So that's everywhere in the city.
That's driven by the general business zoning?
Yes.
I guess I just don't understand the difference between lounge bar and a restaurant bar.
The second part of the question, I mean.
I had one.
Let me get my zoning ordinance. I can read you the definition. There's a, there's a difference between lounge bar and restaurant.
This has got, this has got an A B. C. board. These are the licensing people that give, like, Tacky Jacks, for instance, has a restaurant liquor license.
But I'm just, I'm just going by our zoning orders this way. I don't know.
I believe that's to be a certain amount of your food sales.
Percentage of sales, I think, on a lounge owner.
Correct, correct. So since ours is primarily liquor, that's why. But right now it is. We don't want it to always be that way.
I think it's maybe an eighty-twenty percentage of exposure to that.
I don't know the exact number, but I do know that it is some sort of percentage, yes.
Challenging situation.
Well, you stated your original plan was not to be a late-night bar and open until three A M., which was kind of the hope from everyone with the history that we went through. That location seemed to present a lot of challenges for late-night problems because everything else was closed and gone. It was a lot of backdoor entry. It was a difficult area to manage and police without parking police personnel up there and just had a long history of problems. A lot of it related, in my opinion, to location being dip-challenging, one, and and then A lot of it related, in my opinion, to location being dip-challenging, one, and then long-term certain crowds that were catered to, created the behavior problem. But all of our police matters occurred in the late hours. It was from 1:00 to 3:00 that all of our police issues generated up there. Very seldom anything ever happened till 1:00. And as we renewed that business license twice in those years, there were strong recommendations to close that location at midnight. And with the proposals that were presented and the business plans that were offered by the then-current operator, there was an opportunity granted, say, if you convert to food and if you change this model and you put all this, maybe we can eliminate the problems from 1:00 to 3:00. It didn't necessarily work. I say all that to ask you, if that wasn't your intent early, how important is that 1:00 to 3:00 business hours with your new business plan?
I think it's very important, number one, but number two, I would say that in the last year, we did exactly what it is that you guys wanted us to do without the addition of food. The food wasn't the problem. The problem was a little bit of what you said. It was attracting the wrong crowd. It was not having a dress code policy. It was not having security in place and the right number of security. You can't have one security person for 80 to 100 people, right? So there were so many issues operationally, and it starts there, starts operationally. We can add food, and that might look good, and that might sound great, but if the operations are still wrong, still going to fail. So that's what we focused on, and that's why there haven't been any issues, right? In the last year, there haven't been that many calls at all. I think most of the calls have actually come from us. There haven't been calls to the police department. There haven't been people, you know, having issues outside in the parking lot and things of that sort.
Well, I keep referencing the food operation because our last business plan was to change more to a restaurant with a bar and close earlier, and so the food was going to become a primary function with a full kitchen. So that was the last business plan that the previous owners had submitted.
Okay.
And I will say, food is a good sobering product.
Yeah.
Late at night. So some food in a late-night bar is...
You're getting all the bartenders and waitresses and waiters to close other restaurants. They all come there. You're going after that late-night business.
Yes. Yeah, and again, I think even in the business plan, we do mention to serve late-night food over at Evers as well. Obviously, with the addition of being able to serve food over at the wine bar, we're going to have the equipment to then now be able to do it late night. So that's the whole point, right? That's why we're applying for this CUP. It's all a process, you know? I apologize that that process wasn't as thought out before, but a lot of thought has gone into this. You know, we're taking our time and we're doing things the right way to make sure that we're giving you guys what it is that you want and what you're looking for, but we're doing it in a timely manner that we are able to accomplish, as opposed to just say, hey, we're going to do it, and it did not happen. Actions speak louder than words.
Mr. Harris, I think I owe you an answer to your second part of your question.
I wouldn't have remembered.
What type of use? What type of use would be allowed that could maybe have like an accessory bar and serve food to a restaurant? Business establishment serving meals and food for on-premise consumption, if any area is intended to be used for the preparation, serving, consumption of alcoholic beverages, it can't constitute more than one-third of the net floor area of the restaurant. Otherwise, it'll be considered a lounge, so.
Okay, so it's space allocation, not sales volume. It's one-third of the...
In the zoning ordinance, yes, sir.
Gotcha.
So...
You're limited there because of the space.
So the city recommendation, is the city recommendation against this because of the lounge bar use or because of the hours? I understand not, like, the main thing that I just kept hearing with the recommendation from staff is compliance with the vision, but that's a little broad. So can you speak a little more to any specifics?
I think the overriding factor in our recommendation is the late-night lounge bar uses, and it does not further a family-friendly environment that is stipulated in our Vision 2025 plan or our land use plan. It's just the late-night activities it's proposed with this application.
So to cut to the chase on that, a lounge bar is not the issue. I think the elephant in the room is the 1:00 to 3:00 timeframe of a lounge bar.
We base our denial on totality of the application, but since there is...
I mean, if that was taken off, I know that's not the business model, but I don't think it would be...
What are the, you know, mudbugs, for instance? Do we have problems with mudbugs and being a lounge? Do we have problems there?
There...
Not fitting the family?
I mean, in the past, I think that business license was also referred to the city council for review at one point. Yes, sir.
What other lounge bars are open till 3:00 AM?
I don't know for certain.
What was the question?
What other lounge bars do we have in Gulf Shores that are open this late?
Mudbugs.
I need a social life, apparently.
Mudbugs was renewed with limited hours, and it was either 1:00 or 1:30 closing. And I can tell you that, and a police chief can tell you that, that eliminated 80% of the calls and the problems that were happening there. It's back to that 1:00 to 3:00 late-night problem, and I know it's got a lot to do with operators and quality operators and how well you tend to business and all the things that you put in place. But the fact is that when they implemented their conditions, which had security and ID checks and all that type of stuff and access for our police department cameras and closing at 1:00, it drastically took a burden off of our police department and our community for late-night problems.
Yeah, I would so go as so far as to say that we already did that, though. You know, I would say probably about 80, almost 90% of the issues that the police were dealing with in this last year since I took over in April are nonexistent.
But you're open till 3:00 now?
We're open till 3:00 now. So that's what I'm saying. Again, I don't think it was, again, it was an internal issue, right? That's the best way to put it. It was an internal issue. That's why the issues were happening. That's why the issues continued to happen. No one was doing anything about it. Of course, issues are going to continue to happen if nothing happens.
With this CUP, this is to change the business model. If otherwise, it remains as is, open till 3:00, operating as the business that it is operating as? Or is it in part with a business license renewal? Like, what happens if this is not approved? What happens to the current business?
After we adjust the hours or whatever, or see the council wants to do, after we...
This wasn't...
So you can't stale them.
This was not approved in their business license application. This pending would not be approved, and...
So this is part of their business license application?
It's separate, but I mean, we're holding the business license application pending the results of this CUP application.
Okay.
Now, CUPs can be revoked, correct?
CUP can be revoked.
Because it's a list of conditions.
Yeah, I mean, if you place, you know, planning commission city council can place specific conditions on a CUP request, and yeah, if they didn't follow the conditions within that, and yeah, we could take action to revoke the CUP, yes.
Well...
I can tell you that it's easier to revoke a business license with conditions than it is a CUP. That's just from what we went through and learned when we had the issues before with mudbugs. And, you know, the other difference is mudbugs is in a zoning where it didn't have to have a CUP for that use at that location, where this location falls in a different zoning and gets a zoning look, not just a business license overview.
I want to ask, if you don't mind, also, when mudbugs was having all the problems, was it basically late night y'all were getting calls down there?
Yes, sir, once.
Okay.
Do you happen to know the amount of time y'all spent up at...
Evers.
Evers. Would, if you don't mind, to say with the public...
Don't even put you on the spot. We're just making sure we try to be fair about this and try to get all the information.
Me, too, but we did.
So I don't have any of the numbers and the data or anything like that. I haven't done any analysis on our calls, our call volume at either of these locations. I can speak generally, which both of you, both, everyone has already spoken a lot as far as that goes. I can't tell you from January to now how many times we've been anywhere for that matter because I haven't looked at the numbers. I don't want to say anything that's not true. I know that Chief Nedermeier has, he has performed a lot of data analysis from our CAD system to determine like what's best for the community, what's best for officers or where we're stationed, our people. He can definitely say more to this topic, but I'll happy to answer questions.
You're basically saying, sir, as we put you on the spot.
This is something I would have been happy to do if I could have easily done preparation myself, but I know he has done it, and for him to do, put a lot of work into it, I would hate to speak on his behalf.
I'm with the city council, be with that. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I will be seeing this. We could certainly pass this off. And Chairman, I did try to, I don't know if Chief Nedermeier's here. I mean, he missed our staff meeting yesterday. He wasn't at the city council meeting last night. I've tried to call him several times, so I did want to alert him that we were having this hearing, so he could attend if he chose to.
I'll send him an email, too, but I didn't hear back on him, so he's probably busy.
So I think one of our, I think with our family-friendly vision, 100% on board, and I've heard a lot of that we don't have a lot of places to go entertainment-wise. So the shift to karaoke, I think, is positive. I can see a lot of people wanting to do that. I think adhering and taking the requests from the city very seriously and, like you said, in that turnaround time, I want to acknowledge that, that's great. I think coming here with a plan is great also. And I think to support our small businesses' vision and your business model, I think that's important for us to do as well as the city. I personally, without having Nedermeier's data, can't say one way or the other. I think everything, with the exception of those late-night hours, I would be, I would personally be in approval of this, but I just, I don't feel like I have all the information to make a decision. I don't know how you guys feel as well.
I concur. I mean, that's really probably my biggest hang-up on being able to vote on this right now is that, from what I remember us having this through city council meetings, was that we had a huge issue up there with our police force, and we're basically subsidizing the late hour, and from our understanding, the people aren't even from our community. They're coming from other areas. And so for us, for our taxpayers to be subsidizing our police force, to be up there hanging out there is an issue. And so we're really, you know, I personally cannot get behind this until I know those numbers and know that we're not subsidizing this 1:00 AM to 3:00 AM for everybody else to hang out, party.
I understand.
So that's kind of where I'm going to be on that scenario, however.
Do you guys mind if I read the quote from Police Chief Nedermeier that John Mullen took from Orange Beach News?
Okay.
Okay. He was, obviously, you know, he was asked about the security issues and whatnot, and this is what he said, I quote, "They have been very responsive to us. The officers have reported back to me that their security is in place, their security is working, and they frequently turn away bad customers who aren't in compliance with what they are asking." So that's what he specifically said this morning on Orange Beach News to John Mullen when asked about it.
And that does speak to you as an operator. A lot of the problems that even that were still going on up there because of the location and the back door and the hidden area back there, were calls after the business was closed that folks weren't leaving the parking lot, and it just became a hangout, which is something either. If you don't get all those folks, but you can't keep them from coming back.
Correct.
So I still think there's information from our police department that would be beneficial. Obviously, he spoke to your responsiveness as an operator, which may not have happened in the past and is positive now that you're responding, but I still think there's some additional information I'd like to hear.
And regardless of how this board votes today, regardless, you have another opportunity to go forward to city council.
Okay.
And present your case again.
Okay.
They'll make the final decision. And if we don't have enough information to make the decision, I don't think he, my director, would agree, so.
But it wouldn't move to city council until we do make a decision.
We got to make a decision either way. We got to make the vote on, yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Make a motion, we tabled this, until we have that information.
Sure.
Defer this to the next...
What would that do to the business license?
What would that do to the license? The business license is still pending. I mean, we're not going to take action on a business license until this CUP request is processed.
Let me ask you a deeper question, Andy. From staff's perspective, this is a zoning issue and a use issue in a certain location. That's why we're here for the CUP.
Yes, sir.
I know the business license is tied to this CUP approval, but if this was a brand-new operator and there was not a current business history there, would this be staff's recommendation that that location in the BG zoning district is not suitable for lounge bar uses?
Yes, sir.
Because of the location, the residential?
It goes back to kind of the overall, our future land use plan and Vision 2025. We don't think a lounge bar use is, you know, upholding the goals and visions stated in those plans.
We're really not, we're not really making a ruling on the business license here or any comment to the business license. Our decision is based on your zoning recommendation for that use in a zoning district that only allows it by CUP.
Correct.
Yes, sir. We did find, just real quick, we did find the article that was being referenced in the, was it OB, Orange Beach News? It was written today, but it says in May of 2023, Deputy Police Chief Dan Nedermeier said that the bar had come into compliance with the conditions set. They've been very responsive to us. Officers have reported back to me that their security is in place, the security is working. So that was, that section of that was, is from 2023, but the article is written today. So we don't know for sure. But anyways, we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about the zoning, so.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come up and talk to us about this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will look for a motion.
I'm just going to kind of reiterate, I still don't feel like I have all a lot, I don't have all the information to vote one way or the other on this. I think, I don't know who has been notified within craft farms that's within 750 feet. I can't imagine, I don't think there's any houses within 750 feet. I know the vision for Gulf Shores is, I know the vision very well for Vision 2025, but we're also expanding into entertainment districts. We've talked about looking at Pelican Place, like wanting it to be another wharf, which has a lot of entertainment options. So I think this is part of a bigger discussion than to just go back to, I think things are shifting. We're in 2025, you know, so to go back from 2015, I think our vision, we're writing a new vision. So I think, I personally, I think I would like more discussion around this. I'd like to talk to staff a bit more. I'd like to talk to the police more, and I just don't feel comfortable making a decision on that zoning. That's just the way that it is. I think it's a bigger conversation.
It's up to whatever this commission motion, the motion is made, we'll vote on it, so. Somebody make a motion.
Well, I think we have three options. So do you have a, do you have a motion?
So do you have a, do you have a motion?
Any motion you'd like to make?
I mean, I, I would like to hear from.
You want, you want a motion for delay?
I, I, I think it would make sense for us to defer to get more information from the police department, to get more information from the community, to get more information from city, city staff to talk through, through what we've, what we've been recommended. So that would be my recommendation is to defer to get, I, I, is to defer to get more information before we make a recommendation.
Put that in the formal motion.
That's not going to put Hebus in any business jeopardy waiting a, a month or however long it takes to get on the next commission meeting.
He said it wouldn't. I will second it.
Put that in the formal motion. Will you state your motion, Chairman?
Make a motion to defer item nine, Hebus Karaoke, uh, Z A. Twenty-five-nine, Hebus Karaoke and Arcade Bar to the next planning commission meeting, pending further review and input from police staff, potentially community.
I'll second that.
I'll have a motion in a second. Let's do a, let's do a, um, roll call, Mayor.
All right, keep the cameras.
Uh, okay, I'm okay with a motion.
Frank Bland.
Yes.
Bill Harris.
Yes.
Yes.
Alanya.
Yes.
It's unanimous. So read the motion again, uh.
To the main meetings and the future review and information sharing from police and staff.
Okay.
All right, that takes one.
And just so the applicants are aware, the next meeting will be held on a Wednesday. Let me just.
When is the next meeting?
I'm about to get, um, yeah, it's a Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. The planning commissions are typically at, on Tuesdays, but because of, I believe Memorial Day falls on Monday and the city council's meeting on Tuesday, so this has been pushed to Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at four P M. In this same location.
Okay. Okay, what's next? Um, is there anybody in there that would like to speak on anything else that did not get a chance to come on the formal agenda today? All right, any communications from staff? Andy, you got anything? Scott, y'all got anything you want to tell us?
Yeah, uh, other than the rescheduling of the meeting, um, we'll send out a reminder, but just, next meeting is on Wednesday, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion with adjourn?
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Thanks for your attention. Thanks for your attendance today, folks. Meeting is concluded.